Melissa, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, is it, should I put my, because I'm on my laptop, because my desktop's down. Is it better if I have my earbuds in, do you think?
No, you're clear.
Okay. Yeah. Maybe I'll, let me try.
We're being recorded, just so you know.
Any better for hearing? That's better than out and about in the room. Okay. Well, thanks for doing vacation, extra work, Melissa, appreciate it. Melissa squared on that one. I'm not calling you squares. Couple of things, so Melissa D., since I'm on my laptop and the logistics of also sharing a screen could be tricky. Melissa S. will do that when we get to that point. And then Scott will be on, obviously, Board, Maureen. And I'm gonna have to toggle, because I couldn't print out the agenda, off the toggle between the agenda and this image.
Hi, Melissa D., Melissa S. I already saw Bill, sorry, that's why I didn't say hello.
I'm old news today, here.
I'll keep it on mute, because the dog tries to chime in a lot.
Okay. Well, you know, we might need a canine perspective. Let me just see. Actually, Melissa asked, can you, I bet your computer's tied into the printer, could you just print the agenda for me? Do you mind, I'll run down and get it?
Yes, let's see what I can do, I'm on it.
Yeah, I've been digging behind the CPU here to figure out why the thing's not, I pressed the power button, there's just dead, no response. So it's curious. Maureen, how are you?
Good morning, Harris, everybody.
Good.
How are you doing? Bill, I've printed to the central office printer.
All right, I'll go get it, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, got it, thanks, Melissa.
Sure.
Hi Catherine, how are you? To Scott, hi Sylvia. So Sylvia, is Alex joining, do you know, from Brazil?
He texted me yesterday that, you know, connectivity could possibly be an issue for him, so in the event that he wasn't able to, you know, connect, that we should carry on in his absence, although he would make an attempt, he just didn't know whether or not the connectivity would hold up from where he was.
Okay, so you'll chair it then when we're ready?
Sure.
Okay.
Just direct me whatever it is you need me to do.
Okay, so we, just, once we're at a quorum, I think we had five, Melissa D., confirmed, is that right? You're muted. We got David now.
And Jody.
And Jody's in?
Yeah.
And so, so the confirmed participants for the board are here?
Yeah, we're just missing, um, I think we're just missing Theresa and, um, and Alex right now, so that's us.
I just got a text from Alex saying that he's, uh, he should be able to join soon, but he didn't want us to join without him, so it's up to you, Bill, what you want to do, he just said that, that he's in a bit of a loop, trying to start. So it's up to you whether or not you want to hold for him, or if you want me to just open it, whatever you want.
Well, we're at quorum, right? Yeah, I might suggest, given he might have some technical issues and knowing Alex well and his amazing patience, that I think he would suggest we get going, if that makes sense, so I think Sylvia, once you call the meeting to order, I can step into, hey, there's Alex, I can step in to kind of review the agenda and our approach here, and Teresa's here as well.
Susan Salas.
Hi, everybody.
Alex's question is, do you want to have Sylvia chair the meeting, with you participating, in case you're in an hour, or do you want to go ahead and call it to order and share it?
No, honestly, it would be best if Sylvia, can you guys hear me okay?
A little broken up.
It's a little bit broken.
We can hear you.
It would be best if Sylvia, it would be best if Sylvia could do it, because I have a very weak connection. Thank you Sylvia.
Sure.
Okay, so I think we're ready. Yeah, yeah, please, proceed, and call us to order, and then we'll proceed.
Okay, I don't have the actual formal language in front of me, but from my recollection, I like to call to, you know, order an emergency meeting of the Hastings-on-Hudson Board of Education regarding the damage at the FMS complex over the winter holiday.
Great, so we'll commence, and you have Board in front of you an agenda, or at least you have it electronically. Okay, I have a text from Theresa and Melissa D., she's trying to get in, she's in a view-only meeting.
Um, yeah, I moved her over, she should be as a contributor now.
Okay, all right, so, so Board, you have in front of you.
Hey, I'm in, sorry.
Okay, great, so you have in front of you the agenda. I appreciate your patience and flexibility in coming together at noon time on New Year's Eve. We've been trying, Board, to keep you very informed of this very unfortunate situation that occurred here, starting Christmas Eve. A number of us, mostly particularly Scott, Maureen, have been full-on really since this situation occurred, Joe Mariano too, excuse me, Joe, you've all been almost living here, which we'll get to in a second, but I just want to review the agenda, which is, we'll start out with an update for the board on the water damage, some of that material you've seen, but it's very important now, get in the formal public record, which is this meeting. Then we'll move to any kinds of questions, discussion you as a board have about that update, so that's item two, if you will, the presentations, and you should see now shifted out of executive content into public content, two, two documents there. Then, I'm sorry?
I'm moving it now, so it'll be there.
So then we'll shift to item three is to business, and there's a resolution there, very important to the work going ahead that you'll be asked to vote on, there's a memo with that. At that point, Maureen certainly will explain in detail the nature of that resolution and why it's so important. Then we'll move into item four, Board comments, and then we'll have adjournment. We do not have public comment in this meeting, that is allowed for and provided, we just felt in this virtual format and given the nature of this meeting, the board, the public is, I know there's public participating and listening, but it's not a meeting for public comment. And so we would ask the public's cooperation to listen, take notes, and at a later meeting, there'll be definitely an opportunity for all kinds of public comment, I deeply value that as a superintendent. So, the other funny thing here is, yes, I'm in my office, and for some reason, my desktop's not working. So I'm on the laptop, which means as we work through some documents, Melissa Samansky will do the screen share. So unless there's some questions about the agenda, why don't we go to, go to the update? And I'm gonna go to the memo before the presentation, the actual deck. And so, I don't know, Board, if you need a screen share on the memo, but there it is. I will, as is my norm, not read this memo to you, but I'll outline what's here, and I guess I'll depend on Melissa to sort of move down through it. But this memo, if you just freeze there, Melissa, thank you, this memo is something you saw as a board an earlier version of, it was created by Melissa, Scott, Maureen, Joe, to create a running record, which we felt was very, very important. I've updated it late yesterday to put up at the top what I call background, which lists the incident, the timing as we best understand it, you can scroll, scroll down a little bit, and Melissa, thank you. And we list, before we get to analysis of the cause, we list there all the individuals involved, both from within the district, that's the administrative team there, and then our external partners. And we can give detail on that as needed going forward. Let me just stop there for a second. Once this occurred, when, when us knowing about it, probably within about a half hour, you know, Joe's onsite, a number of his team is onsite, we can speak to that, Board, and the questions you may have. And then through structural relations with the renew, we had them onsite by 1:00 AM in the morning, and it was probably some forty of them, immediately going into cleanup mode. So there's been very intensive work with that set of external partners. Fortuitously, through competitive RFPs, we already had in our, on our team, if you will, LAN, and, and also Rena and PPW, who have been very, very important us going through this, so we've had expert engineers, architects, and then the hygienists, as you'll hear, nicer's been involved, as is necessary and required. So it's been very thorough and comprehensive, once we were into addressing this crisis mode, and internally, very much led by Scott and Maureen. Since this is an FMS issue though, district-wide, it is essential, and we've been very fortunate, we've got an expert veteran principal administrator in Scott on this, which we'll get into more in a little later. Let me go to the analysis of the cause, so we'll just slide up a little bit here. We know what happened now, it's very clear what happened. That we knew there was some type of water leak when the fire department came in, we then subsequently, through renewing others, understood that it was a sprinkler system up in the attic, which has been there, as explained here, some eighty years, it is not the ideal location for a sprinkler system, but it was, it's there. Getting it out of there was close to impossible, so there it is. We now know there was a bend in the pipe near a head, and condensation had gotten caught there, and with the freeze thaw cycle that was occurring prior to Christmas Eve, it then led to that pipe failing. We also lay out there, and we can come back, I'm just going through the headlines, we can come back for questions, Board, that we then understood that the alarm system, which should have caught this, did not work, we've gone back to look at that, because that's critical to the future, and not letting this happen, happen again. The location, again, let me emphasize the location of the sprinkler system, it's an eighty-year-ago decision, and then it's not something you would do now, but, but shifting it out was close to impossible, so that's why it's there. That sprinkler system's been regularly, regularly checked. We also, for many years, have had other thaw-free cycles, did not create an issue. So that, that, this is, what you're gonna hear in essence is the classic perfect storm, in the sense of a failure on multiple kind of levels, all coming together. The other thing is, we looked at the issue of building checks. In some districts, that goes on, those are typically done early in the morning or during the day. We did not have on, as has been the norm here, we did not have on Christmas Eve or Christmas Day, a building check. I want to stress that even if that had occurred, we still would have had multiple hours of water running. The alarm's not tripping is really a critical issue. The sprinkler system itself, having a bent pipe and a problem there, even though inspected, that's an issue we have to come back to look at. But the onsite human checking, while valuable, would not have solved the extended damage we had, would have been less, we would have caught it after probably several hours, but given that this was at the top of the Farragut Wing, that water was flowing even for a number of hours, would have created quite significant damage. I won't go now through the rest of this day by day, but I, let me just show you what's here, so on Thursday, if we go down, Melissa, thank you, just want to stress who is here, what was starting on that day, in terms of paying attention to what was going on, outline here, the communications goes underway. It was very important on Thursday that Sylvia did come onsite as Board Vice President, I coordinated that with, with Alex, and you may recall, Board, we texted you that day to say we were having Sylvia onsite, we have to limit severely who comes into the space now, for safety reasons. It was really important in my mind that one of you and one of your officers could lay eyes and walk the entire facility to see the extent of what was occurring. We then moved to Friday, you have more detail on what was going on with physical demolition, a lot of detail here, you see right away on third, Friday, the coordination, fortuitously, but it's made a big difference with LAN, with PPW, with our own team, led by Joe, Maureen on this, Scott on this, so nobody wanted this, but a theme right now is this team is really stepping up to be thorough, comprehensive, and attentive, all the way through. And a few days I wasn't onsite, they were good to keep me in the loop at key consultation points. The, you can see we talk about relocation plans here on, on Friday, this is still something in progress, we haven't resolved all that. So we then, in the communication Thursday, had said, post-weekend, we will back with more, so if we jump down through, Saturday, Collins moving is, started being onsite, intensive work, which we can explain a little if you want, Scott has the details, Maureen has the details on the work they're doing, they'll literally pack up the entire Farragut Wing in a very organized and careful way. Sunday, this continued, you can see, this is, I mentioned earlier, truly been a twenty-four-seven situation. Into Monday, more work, understanding the extent of demolition needed, as you see there at this point, and I'll give, in a second, give up the mic, so Maureen and Scott can give a few more detail here. But within the Farragut Wing, all ceilings, all walls, all floors, where there's been any water, they're coming out. And that is because we've got to be very thorough here, that when this, this is rebuilt, we want no risk of mold, no risk of any unhealthy situations for our staff, or faculty, or families, and students. So this is a time for us to be extra thorough, and fortunately, again, we've got experts helping us be very thorough. If you come down here on Monday relocation plans, intensive work on that, we, we do not have decisions made, and we will keep saying to you in this public meeting, we're still working on things, those kind of questions, Scott's ready to handle, he's working very closely with Amy and Andy Clement on this. Again, there's another example of the three peoples, the three principals working very, very carefully, consulting with Melissa Samansky for a district-wide perspective, on the facility side of things, can, you know, courting with Maureen and Joe on that. But it's, it's meant tons to all of us that those three principals are working seamlessly and lockstep on what the next steps are. Very important letter went out from me yesterday, layered, first from Scott to the FMS staff, then to all, all staff, and then at the end of the day, to all families laying out our return to school. We need to, Monday, take one of our six inclement weather days and have it an inclement weather day, district-wide. But it will be a report-to-work day for all employees. We need that day so that all staff and employees in all three buildings can be getting ready for the return of students, because it will be a different environment once they come back. Most vividly for our FMS students, but potentially also for some of our high schools, and also potentially for Hillside, we're not quite there yet, but that's what we're working on. Tuesday, will be back to school for Hillside students, and the high school students, we'll reemphasize this in more communications, just to remind people, but the FMS students will also be out Tuesday, because the FMS staff need that two full days to be ready. So then Wednesday will be our full return for everybody. Given that New York State has strict requirements as to when you're in and out of school, and if you're not in, you got to explain it, I'm working on that thoroughly. On Monday, Nick Macri, when he's back in, he and I will navigate that path with the state and what's required. And I already have a few fellow supers who are sending me literally the checklist to work through. Ken Slenson, Dobbs Ferry, has been particularly helpful, giving me the checklist to work through, but we have our own people, who are very smart on this, and experienced, like Nick Macri. And Maureen has said, Bill, wait till Nick gets in Monday, and we'll sort this out. Final comment, it's actually helpful, we've got those six snow days, and we can, in full approval by the state, use that as a full day out Monday. And I just want to stress to you as a board and families who may be paying attention, that's a day we would have had taken at some point. So actually, it's, in a sense, a no-harm-no-foul day to take and just get an extra, you know, break for, an extra day in the vacation. None of us wanted it, but it's a way to do that. We will sort out the issue of Tuesday and what that means for instructional minutes, but that's something I'm working on. Again, work with Nick Macri, work with other resources, so we can sort that out. So that, that's where we are. The actual presentation is detached, I don't necessarily know if I want to necessarily go through that right now, and come back to that, that's, because it was very important to me, I asked for that. Melissa Samansky put it together, so that there actually is a visual record with some narrative in that PowerPoint deck that's now in the public and in this meeting, that you all can go look at images, people in the public can look at images, to have a sense of what's been going on inside the facility. We cannot allow anyone but a few administrators and all of the workers into the facility. It's intensive work, and that's for safety and reasons, but we will begin showing more photos, so people know exactly the extent of what occurred and what's happening now, in the thoroughness of it. But let me stop, before we go to Board questions, I don't know if Scott, in particular, Maureen, Melissa, you want to add anything in right now to my, my overview? Scott, maybe you start there, please?
Me too. Hello, Board, great to see you, wish it was under better circumstances, but like Bill said, it is quite, quite a, quite a, a situation. But like Bill said, it is quite, quite a, quite a situation here. I have been on site since Thursday morning and plan to be here every day until we are up and running and fully ready to go. That the the damage is is significant. And I think I really want to stress that, you know, to let our our staff that's here participating and our our community know the Farragut Wing is uninhabitable at this point. But I want everybody to know that the rest of the building is is fine. We are getting a number of questions from from people about the library is fine. The auditorium is fine. Anything beyond that, all the the music rooms, the Washington Wing, everything in in those areas have not been affected at all. So there's a lot of good usable space for us. You know, like Bill said, working very closely with with Amy and with Andy. I know that our our fellow colleagues are ready and willing to to take us in and to help out with with, you know, the next several months to to keep us, you know, afloat and to keep us moving. It has been our intention from the beginning that we are not talking about remote learning. That it's not something that we are, we are going to do. We are not going to send our students to other places outside of Hastings. This is, this is critical that we are, we are family and we are here. We will make sure that we are doing the best that we possibly can. We should have a a much more definitive plan, hopefully by the end of the day tomorrow in terms of where we're going to be going and how that's all going to play out. And we are going to be very open and transparent about that and try and, you know, make sure that everybody knows exactly what's taking place. I think we are well into planning logistics in order to make sure that, you know, all of the different aspects of school are being taken into account. We are really thinking through safety and security. We're thinking through the health aspects of all this to make sure that our staff, our students are all really taken care of. I am confident I have seen the most amazing work by a tremendous team of people that have come into this building, renew restoration, Collins Brothers Moving are just, they are truly God sense to us and have really shown and stepped up. And I just wanted to publicly thank them for for all the work that they are doing to help us move forward. I know my our fearless assistant principal, Dan is here. He's sitting, sitting next to me, not on camera, but we are working to get a schedule put together to make sure that our our students are attending classes and are really able to experience the full, you know, educational experience that we offer. There will be challenges. There will be hiccups. There will be things that we have to contend with. There's a lot of things down the road that we will start to talk about. But really, our primary focus is to get the building back up and running to make sure that we are providing a solid education, which we will, that we're providing a healthy and safe environment for everybody and that school can continue. So, you know, we will continue moving forward. And I'm happy to, as the presentation continues, answer any questions that exist. I know we provided the community, the FMS community with a Google form to submit questions. And I thank everybody for doing that. We've already started putting out, putting together answers to all of those questions. We'll get a Q and a document that's public and ready to go for everybody. But thank you to everybody who submitted questions. Lots of good questions being asked and we want to keep them coming while that's open. So please do so. Looking forward to having our staff back on on Monday where we can plan on Monday and Tuesday for the return of our students. And we will, we will keep fighting the good fight, that's for sure.
Thank you, Scott. Let me, can anybody hear me? Yeah, let me, let me also thank Nate Morgan as president of the HTA. Nate and I have talked a lot in the last several days. And I stressed to him that it's it's that, sometimes I speak in metaphors, I'm sorry. But you know, when you got in the airplane, they say, you know, in a crisis, the adult put the oxygen mask on first, then make it sure it's on for the children. That's what we're doing here. This, we want to really pay attention to our staff so they can be really in the right place correctly, emotionally, intellectually, otherwise, when everybody's back in next week. So I think it meant a lot to Nate that that was our focus. And we also have two other bargaining units who are actively involved here. But I want to thank Nate for being so supportive and understanding that we've, we're in a very difficult situation. But our focus has been what is best for our students and our staff long term, which also means that's why the minute I started walking through the FMS, excuse me, the Farragut Wing, let's be very precise because we want people to know it's big, but it's a Farragut Wing. The rest of our facility here in the Farragut complex is 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 fine. But the minute I saw the extent of it and the engineers confirmed this, we had to be thorough in 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 this because otherwise we're going to have some pretty long term issues here in Hastings in that facility. And I have led districts elsewhere where mold has been an issue. We are not going to let that happen here. I've led districts where stuff has not been dealt with directly as it should have been thoroughly. We're not going to let that happen here. I've been around this business a long time near other districts, much richer than this district, where things were not dealt with. And it just came back on us. So this is a time for us to to get Farragut Wing correct. And let me say one last thing. It's going to be easy for us to get upset about why did this happen? My aim is let's acknowledge what happened and let's keep moving. Let's acknowledge what's happened, let's keep moving. And the other thing I want to say is we are wide open for interacting with families on this. And that was why I think was actually Scott and Dan's creative idea that trying to do a virtual meeting just wouldn't have worked. But the Q and A and we'll have the FAQs, that's our commitment to saying families raise those questions in a systematic way, we will be back to you. Because transparency, clarity on what's happened here is what matters most. We will work really hard to keep answering questions, giving responses. But we'll do that in a collective way. We can't go one by one. So that was the the genesis of the Google questionnaire we sent out. But again, let me just make a plea. It's so easy to get angry. It is so easy to get upset. I would just ask us to get through that emotion and then focus on, we are working like crazy now to acknowledge what happened, make sure it doesn't happen again. But now do everything we can to have a really good quality, educational, emotional environment for our staff and our children, which may be the the next till we're till for the next several months. Maybe we go in unless Marine, you want, we can pick up Marine.
I just wanted to say.
Please, please.
You know, even beyond what Bill was saying, it's in terms of the damage to the building, the the structural analysis or the analysis from our engineers and the insurance company requires it to be shut down completely. So it's just, it's not even so much as we're like, we want to make sure it's like, it is, it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be allowed to have students in those spaces. So it's, you know, beyond, it's been deemed unsafe. It's an unsafe, you know, environment. Water is fires damaging, water is up there with it because although, you know, you may see it once it's dried out, all that water through the structural, like in the plaster of the ceilings and all the rest has also created, and that was to Bill's earlier point, an unsafe condition beyond even water and mold. It's more so the everything needing to be gutted to the studs. I mean, that's the significance of it. You're talking about a, I don't know the exact square footage off the top of my head. But, you know, again, the rest of the building is fine, but it's a huge piece of our property that's completely now is going to be gutted down to the studs. And and that they don't do that unless it's deemed by insurance and by engineers to be an unsafe environment. They're not, they wouldn't do that. The level of the damages is so significant that it requires that level of work to be done. And that is something that has been determined by multiple groups, even beyond Renew. Renew does their work. So just to kind of, you know, the the people you call in, they don't make that determination. Just to be clear, that was done by a person at the insurance independently sends here as well as our own engineers, because we certainly are not going to rely just on external, although they're excellent external partners, we had our people on the scene too. And they will be alongside with us because this is again, a reconstruction of the building has to also be, our engineers have to be included in all of those steps as as we move forward to ensure that everything is done to, you know, to ensure everything's done at that level in which we need it to be restored. So I just wanted to throw that in there, Bill, in terms of like, just to be that definitive that it's not only our determination, it's an external determination. Like even if we're like, oh, we could dry out the bill, like we would not be allowed, like legally to have students in those spaces or or any, any faculty member either. So it's deemed unsafe. So that is why the repairs, even though some of the areas are dry, could not have allowed us to, you know, reopen any of those wings at all and structural issues with the plaster. So that that's all I wanted to put in there, Bill, at that point.
Yep. So Sylvia, why don't we shift into board questions right now in this segment? Because then the next segment one is actually with the business resolution part that is very important. There could be questions there. And I, Sylvia, I don't want to step on your toes, but maybe it'd be helpful. I do see there, the public's here, they're asking, the public is asking questions. I have to say with all due respect, the way board meetings work is this is a meeting of the board done in public. There's not public comment here. So if you want, we could in a chat function or if you want to send an email with your questions, that's fine. And then we can roll those into this FAQ that we've been discussing. But unfortunately, in this sort of meeting, we're not able to engage in a back and forth with the public. But please send in your questions, email them to me and we will fold them into that FAQ document. All right? So Sylvia, I guess if you're now, you're now running.
I'm just saying that you can see that there's at least three board members who have questions. So if you want me to go in order that they, I see them. The first one I saw that raised his hand was Alex. So I think Alex, if you want to ask a question.
Sure, Sylvia, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I just know that some middle school parents had raised a concern that for some of those eighth graders are coming up against Regents. And there's, they were counting on a lot of prep time for going into those in the next 10 days or so. Is there any idea or any ability to delay the Regents that those eighth graders would be taking so they'd have those those two days back for prep? Thank you.
Can't hear you, Scott.
Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. So we don't have any Regents exams in the middle school being offered during the January Regent session. All of our Regents exams are offered at the end of the school year in June. So we should be in good shape. Any midterm testing that will happen at the high school should not be affected at all.
Okay, I think Jody, you were the next one, had your hand up.
Can you hear me? Yeah, I actually don't have a question. I just want to, I just want to give a huge thank you, actually brings tears to my eyes to think about what you all have. I'm serious. Bill, Maureen, Melissa, Melissa, Joe.
Scott.
Scott, Dan.
Scott and Scott.
Andy and Amy. And I know I'm leaving people out, but I, this is beyond unthinkable. The idea that it happened on Christmas Eve and Christmas and you all who, every one of you who needed, just needed a break and you hardly got a break. And I want to thank you, Bill, for reaching out to Sylvia. I know Alex was away to have Sylvia come into the building. I mean, I know why you did it and I, the idea that Sylvia came in and could communicate with the board and could show us pictures because I think without the pictures, it was sort of unimaginable. I mean, you couldn't imagine the extent of the damage. And and then once seeing the pictures, it just made it all. And I know other people who are here and people in the community will get to see pictures and you'll see what we're talking about, but just to see the water and the floors, the ceilings down and everything about it, it was. And so I, I really am just at this point, and you know me and I will have questions. But I just want to really, from me, and I know on behalf of the board, just want to thank you all. Unbelievably, I mean, your attentiveness and your expertise and knowing how to do this and what to do is invaluable to us, to the community and for the children. And I know we're going to be okay and it's going to be a long haul. And it's, it's in the midst of every other day to day thing and long term thing that we're thinking about. But this comes first and thank you all. Horrible way to start off this new year, but yeah.
Thanks, Jody. Catherine, I think you had your hand up next.
Well, Jody said exactly what I was thinking. Just to take a moment of gratitude for our leaders who have done so much. And we're lucky to have such strong, stable leadership to see us through this, this, this catastrophe. Right? It's a really difficult thing for district, for our schools, for our staff, for teachers, for our students, for the community. And we are so grateful for all that you're doing. I mean, the day after Christmas to get that text and then to see the pictures. And I urge the community members that are here to take the time to look at the pictures and the destruction of the Farragut Wing because it really is tremendous. And I just call on all of us in the community to come together for our children and our teachers to rebuild the school and to make it strong and to make it great. It's going to be a lot and we're all going to have to band together. And I hope that our friends in the PTSA and SEPTA and HEF, the mayor, right? All the different members of our community can push together to make our school functioning strong because our leaders are doing heroic work, but they can't do it with, without all of us joining in to push it forward for our kids so that they can have continued access to our great education here in Hastings.
Heroic.
That's it.
Thanks, Catherine. Teresa, you had your hand up before. Did you still want to express anything?
I did, I do. And it's a combination of both of what Jody and Catherine shared. My goodness, how stressful, what a crisis. And I, I am in disbelief of how much you all have worked since December, since the middle of the night on December 25th. As as a school leader of a very small school, I, I once had a classroom flood over a Christmas holiday and it was so stressful and the scale was so much smaller than you all have been dealing with. And I just, I hope that you're all okay as administrators. And I, I'm, I'm in awe of how much you have worked and how present you have been and so grateful that for your, for your leadership during this time. And as Catherine said, I want to speak directly to our community as well and ask for your grace and flexibility during this time. I know it's, it is very easy to say, oh, my gosh, what, what am I supposed to do with my child on Monday? January 6th, I have to go back to work. There were no plans to have our, our children home. It's quite inconvenient. This is a time of inconvenience for everyone. And just as Catherine said, it is such an important time to come together instead of opting to potentially criticize or just emote difficult feelings. And I, I really ask that you all inform yourselves and share the truthful information about what has happened with your, you know, the families in your circles so that everyone can be on the same page with what actually happened and how much work is going into this intense crisis. And the attention toward the health of our children in terms of mold and safety is really something to be so appreciated and not taken for granted because not every district or every leadership would have this as a priority. So I, I just really put out a plea and a request to the community to see this as a time for us, not to be cliche, but for us to come together and support the district as our school leaders are really thinking through everything. And again, I mean, thank you is just this very simple phrase, but. And again, I mean, thank you is just this very simple phrase, but I'm, I mean, wow. Thank you so much for everything you've done the past week.
Oh, Maureen.
I just wanted to echo what everyone has said, just a phenomenal kind of disaster recovery effort and leadership. Bill, Scott, Joe, Maureen, Melissa, the principals, right? And, and all the facility staff and all the coordination, Sylvia for being on site. I think, you know, all the regular updates and the detail, very helpful, the pictures, very helpful. So just want to echo my thanks and that the perfect storm is kind of the best way to put it, right? It always sort of ends up happening that it's not one thing, it's a few things and coming together. But really well done. Please keep the communications coming. You have our full support.
Go ahead, Catherine.
Now I have a question on behalf of my middle schoolers. In addition to being very concerned about rumpus in Ms. Green's classroom, because they, it's their deeply beloved character that she teaches them about. They were like, what's the status of rumpus? But you don't really need to tell me. But I was just sharing that to show that our children too are concerned about the space and the place. And they're connected to their teacher's well beings and their classrooms well beings. And they were also curious about their lockers and the contents of their lockers. And I know a lot of that had been destroyed because of the water came down. And I know you've been inventorying it and you have this whole system. And I wasn't sure who could answer the question, but if you could tell us a little bit about that process so we could share it with our children. Thank you.
Yep. Scott, before you go, let me, I'll be just a headline because we've done a divisional labor here. So anything on the academic side of the house, that's Scott and the principals and Samansky. Sorry, a lot of Melissa's, she doesn't mind the last name. Anything on the facility side is Maureen, Joe, and yes, Scott, because it's, and Dan, because it's a little Venn diagram, if you get it, right? So I also want to just reiterate that you have an answer coming, but I've walked this space. And it's amazing to me, the care that's going on, it's not, you know, we couldn't get every little item addressed. But the care that's going on, for example, I was downstairs this morning watching one of the Collins moving people wrap each ceramic piece on the shelves in Mr. Elliot's room to be stored. Those are things not water damaged, but that's the attention to detail. Now, will we get every detail right? No way. But we are working so hard to be attentive to what matters to our students and to our staff. And again, thank goodness, we got a veteran team. We did not want this to happen. It's happened. And now we're moving on with a veteran team that knows how to deal with crisis. So Scott, now you can fill in. You're muted again, sir.
How's that?
Good.
Excellent. So from the, the minute that we got here, it was a, it was a salvage operation because we know how important things are within, within a school building. All of the lockers were individually emptied. Everything was bagged and tagged so that we know every student has their things. Some things were destroyed, paper, things of that nature that got wet, we did have to get rid of. But personal belongings and objects, we were able to salvage. And we will get that, that, those things back to every student. In terms of classrooms, I can tell you, we have, we have done our best to salvage every possible thing that we can. We have some classrooms over a hundred boxes worth of, worth of things that we were able to pull out of those rooms safely. Student projects, books, personal belongings, photographs, all those kinds of things. If water did not touch them, we have saved them. So it may take some time to go through and be able to say what, you know, what is definitively salvageable. But we have, we have truly saved every possible thing that was not touched by water. And I, I credit Collins Brother Moving for truly, they, like Bill said, they have handled everything with kick gloves and have been very attentive to, to trying to make sure that all of our belongings have made it through, that weren't damaged. We have a number of things that were damaged, but I think that's to be expected. But we will, we will make sure that we get everything back that we can.
Thank you.
Of course.
Teresa.
Like, like Cath- Catherine and I both have two children each in the middle school. And we hear, you know, a lot from our, our children and their friends' circles and their text chats. And thi- this was an interesting opportunity for me to learn just exactly how much makeup my seventh grader has in her locker. Which was interesting, you know, and how desperate she was to know if that was okay. So thank you for that answer. I, I just want to like express to the community and to everyone that this must be actually quite hard for the teachers who have invested so much in their physical space. Some who have taught in these rooms for, for like 25, 30 years. I'm, I'm thinking of Mrs. Green's classroom as well, which, you know, it, it is, was like a super homey space for students. So I'm, I'm sure that there is a sense of loss as well. You know, of, of course, as middle schoolers will do, there's also a sense of excitement, you know? We don't have school on Monday and Tuesday and life is up in the air and how exciting. Because they're middle schoolers and I think that's only a natural response. But this, this is damaging of a physical space that was important to the teachers too. And I think it's important for us to acknowledge that.
Teresa, if I can just underscore that, and again, I want to compliment the team this year for being, first and foremost, sensitive to that. And that's why earlier I used that image of who's, who gets the oxygen mask on first. Because a number of people have seen, in our personal lives, have seen some of the videos. And in one case, that young person first commented on, oh, my goodness, that teacher's classroom. Oh, my goodness, that layout on the table. So you're exactly right, Teresa. And so it's so heartening to me that the team here immediately knew this is their personal space. Yeah, they're professionals. Yeah, they come to work, but this is their personal space. And I stress that to Nate, that we're sensitive to that. We're not going to get it all right. There's no way. But first order was how do we recover their space? So when they get back to their teaching, as much of what has been their tools, their resources, you know, their lovely items, their loved items, they can have those. So what, what, we're working hard on that. It ain't going to be perfect, but we were working so hard on exactly what you said, Teresa.
If I could just jump in, the only thing I want to say, because I was there on the premises as a, as one of the board member officers. It's easy to look at Bill and Maureen and Scott where they are right now and think like, oh, things look great. You know, the building is fine. I just want to say, it is devastated. It is, was hyper-localized to that Farragut Wing. And if you were to walk in there, as I did the day after, you will see the bubbles of water that accumulated along all the walls. You will see structural bowing of the infrastructure. You will see people were, you know, water that accumulated on the ground. Everything that, all the watermark of the water that had risen along the walls. You can see people on the screen and think like, it should be fine. It is not fine. It went all the way from the attic, all the way to the bottom of the building, accumulating inches of water and all the way along its path, carving out destruction. That is what the status of the Farragut Wing is. And when Maureen says that external experts, like insurers, people who are worried about liability, say our students cannot be on the premises and that it is not safe, that is what the status. This is not like we're all gonna as a community band together and get our squeegees and towels and wipe things up and run a few, you know, heaters. It is absolutely a wreck, you know? And I, I want to commend, you know, we often praise in Hastings, the fact that we have, you know, a lean team of administrators. And while I, you know, I obviously want to sing their praises and commend them for the hard work that they did over the break. We also understand that everybody deserves a break and none of these people have had a break. And so it's in the lowest and darkest times when you see how hard people work. And I know that these people were here, you know, from day one, being incredibly poised, thinking, how do we get things up and running in a very short turnaround time? And that means a lot to me. You know, I only have one child, not who most, the, you know, the, the majority of their classes are not in the Farragut Wing now. That is a question I actually wanted to raise, just for people who are not as familiar with the layout. The Farragut Wing is, I understand it because it's these three floors, it's mostly going to be impacting the fifth and the sixth graders. And perhaps our administrators could speak to that. And which, you know, who, what, what is the student population that is most directly impacted by this level of damage to the buildings? But I did just want to start out by saying, I appreciate that when I came, you were all very on point, calm, cool and collected and had the ball rolling and have had since, you know, we received the first text from Bill. And on down, and I'm not going to iterate everybody, but you know who you are. And we owe a great debt of gratitude for you. Whether or not this is your job, this is beyond what anybody would expect that they would be dealing with, unfortunately, you know, under any circumstances. So my thanks to you in as small a way as I can say it.
Sylvia, let me, can you hear me? Yes, excellent. Let me answer your, answer your question. So within the Farragut Wing, obviously it holds our entire fifth grade. It holds our sixth, seventh and eighth grade English language arts classes. It holds our art room. It holds our family and consumer science room. It holds our entire guidance suite, the social workers office. It holds the psychologist's office, our security office. It holds the main office, which is also my office and Dan's office. And it holds our math interventionist office. So we have, it's, it's really, it's 17.
Social studies.
We do have one, one social studies classroom in that wing too. So it's a, it's a conglomerate of things. But it's, it's 17 classrooms plus multiple offices that will be shifting out into other spaces.
Maureen, the place where Joe's office is and all, it was that?
That's fine. No, that, 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 it's if you just think the stairwell is like the cutoff, like anything yawns, but within that.
And I know in terms of the academics, I can only imagine the scheduling challenge of all of this. Because not only you have to think about the general education classrooms, but also the special education classrooms. And can you talk to us or shed light for our families listening, how you're making sense of this scheduling and how to meet the needs of all the children?
Yeah, sure. So we are in the process of completely restructuring where, where people are. You know, we laid out all the spaces that we currently have. I know that, and the high school is in the process of providing us with a number of classrooms. We're looking at all of our non-traditional spaces. So we have a, we have an auditorium that we'll, we'll be able to, to utilize. We have a high school auditorium that we'll be able to utilize. We have a, you know, we've got a cafeteria that is not used all periods of the day. You know, so we've got different rooms that, you know, have some free and available spaces that we'll be able to shift around and be able to think through. And then we'll get some additional rooms from high school. We're looking at the possibility of Hillside and, and moving some classes there. That's not definitive yet. But we are going to use every single available space that we possibly can to make this, to make this work. You know, like I said, when I first started, you know, we're going to see some challenges that happen down the road. I don't even want to think about state testing and, and those kinds of things in the spring, but we'll, we'll get there. The primary concern is finding spaces right now for everybody to have new homes and to begin to, you know, reestablish kind of a normalcy of, of what that looks like. We did lose the, the use of the Farragut Gym because that is a, become our main storage area for over 2,000 boxes and technology and all of those things that needed to come out of those rooms. But we've been working on relocating any classes that would have taken place in there. There will be some impacts on things like community events and things of that nature that may have used that space. But again, we'll work with people to see what we can do and what we can't.
Thank you, Scott. That's very helpful. And has the, the mayor, the community reached out about using the community center, the library or other resources? I don't know if that's more of a build question. I was just kind of curious if there's been an outpouring of support from other places in our, in our shared community.
Yeah, I think I've been reaching out to, you know, the village leaders. There was some early inquiries from our end. I think we made a very early and very important decision. And I saw nods of affirmation on this, which is, we want to keep our students within district. And we want to, we want to keep them in person. And, and I think we're going to be able to do that. You hear thinking that. We're working really hard to have that happen. But you heard the numeric there from Scott, 17 classrooms and all the rest. We think we can do this. It's intensive work. But, but again, the village has been wonderful, the mayor, chief, everyone else, other, you know, resources. But we want to be in our buildings and we want to be in person. And again, I got white hair, I got experience. Scott doesn't have white hair, but he's got experience. Maureen doesn't have white hair, but she's got experience.
I do have white hair.
I'm trying to bring some lightness here in this heavy time.
No, no, we know. We are so grateful for all that you're doing.
You know, a more junior team may have been running around saying, where can we have our children go? A more junior team might have been saying, hey, just plug them in, get them on the screen. No, thank you. So we're working hard on that.
Sounds good.
Can I ask a, a question? The, I know we're, we're saying in Hastings and in district and the, the, you know, the preferred thing is to keep them in the district buildings. What, has anything thought been given to the, what I believe is still vacant St. Matthews on Villard Avenue?
Yeah. Bill, do you want me to speak to that? So, yeah, so we, when, during COVID, Joe and I actually had visited that location as a potential. And there were things, and we have brought our engineer and architect with us. I mean, part of it is that the building is not up to code, although it's been used for private schools and, and things of that nature. It would not, you know, just looking at the actual physical condition of it, but there were things in terms of getting, we would have to get a certificate of occupancy. We still have to like meet up to our requirements in terms of building. So that, that was not, again, they may have done work since we visited there. But I think, you know, again, back to what Scott first said, I think, you know, and I've been in that building, Melissa's done some massive work in it. It is not a good space. That would really meet our needs. And it has the classrooms, but there's some other shortcomings and issues around it. But I think we'd be, you know, I think our plan has always been to kind of keep kids here. And also just from a security, there's other things that we have to consider beyond that. Even using spaces in the village, like, well, who else would be in there? Like, we don't have people around our students during the day. We, you know, like they would lose any use of those buildings if, if we have students in them during the day. So, but, but right now, again, we, we don't think we're gonna need to do that. And then that would come with a significant expense, because I think even back then, that was an expensive rental as well. So it is not something that we revisited at this time.
Thank you for that. I know a lot of community, community members are wondering.
Yeah. So if I, Teresa, may I jump in? It's a great question and I always look for headlines you can grab. It's, it's an automatic question. A number, I've, I've had that question in other locations, other districts in a different state. But this is a place where public ed does rightly so, set a very high standard. So just technically speaking, we'd have to meet code requirements, which we probably would not meet. We then have to worry about the security and the supervision, the feeding, the transportation. Once we're out of district, those are all things you've got to worry about, which become very difficult for the children, very difficult for the staff. And, and hear me third on that list, please, becomes a financial issue. But rightly so, public ed in at least the northeastern states sets a very high stand, boy, political comment, just sets a very high standard on what goes on. So like in Connecticut, where in the two districts there, I hit these tough moments. There, we, you, you couldn't necessarily go outside a district easily. And so that's why one very technical, practical logistical reason, we're trying to stay in district. But it's a lot of rooms to worry about. It's a lot of shifting. But we're, we're trying to keep it within district for a set of legal logistical reasons.
Got it. Thank you.
Are there any more questions from the board before we move on to whatever the next portion of the presentation is? I don't see any hands.
So again, I, you have in your record board and now the community who's tying in your, it's in the board doc. So it's permanently in the public record, both the memo that was worked on by a number of people, my name's on it. Because let me just stress there, the buck stops with me on all of these issues. So community, board, all the rest, as you have concerns, frustrations, the buck stops here with me is Bill Mcursie. And so it's a great team working. My job is to create the space and conditions so they can keep doing what they're doing. So we can be there for our kids and, and our, our staff. So that's why that memo has my name on it. It's in the public record. Um, so that's why that memo has my name on it. It's in the public record, but it's a team that built it, but I own that memo. Similarly, the PowerPoint presentation or the deck, whatever is Google Doc deck, whatever it is, uh, the one with the pictures and the narratives, that's also in the public record. We, and we will keep putting out systematically in a accordingly way, other images. So it's fully transparent as to where we are. Lastly, I know there were a few, uh, members of this meeting, uh, the audience wanting to ask questions. Send those to me in an email. Uh, we will fold those into the FAQ document that we mentioned, mentioned earlier. So why don't we shift now, if we could, to the next agenda item, which is what you were about to do Sylvia? Uh, that's an actual resolution for discussion and a vote.
Okay. So is there particular language that I need to use in terms of, do I put it out there for a vote? I'm not sure how it works.
Maureen, do you need to introduce this?
Yeah. So let me just introduce it. So a- as Bill had first mentioned, you know, that this is, you know, the resolution is the, the typical legalese of how resolutions are written. Um, and, and what, what this is, and it's connected to maybe some que- questions people may have on, on the financial piece of it. So largely, you know, the majority of the repair will be, um, will be handled by insurance, right? You know, uh, our understanding of it, you know, we're still waiting on final numbers and all the rest. But we understand that the areas that they've, um, individually deemed unsafe and need of replacement and all the rest. But as lined, outlined in this memo, you know, some of the things in it that we, um, as we look to do this work, um, in the existing Farragut complex, as the board is aware, much of that, and, and some of it actually is connected to some of the work we were considering doing within the bond referendum, which now this will address some of that work, um, in terms of flooring and some lighting and such. But, um, the lighting in those areas are, are quite old, um, the ballaces, the ceiling system and all the rest are, um, something that we don't have in most of the other areas of the building. And this would be an area that we would, um, be updating. But because the insurance will only, uh, replace an in-kind or in-like type of system, what we'll, what we're proposing to do is to put in, and we would then, in a year from now, would need to rip it out. So instead take the credit, which will reduce the cost for us, and then use money out of the insurance reserve, which we actually just, um, created last year on this, you know, for this very purpose. Because A, the insurance, sometimes, um, this helps where, if there are things that are either, uh, like not fully covered or just things out a little bit outside the scope or things that, um, are related to an insurance claim, this reserve will then pay for those additional expenses. So as again, um, one of the areas, the majority of areas that we are concerned about, making sure that the lighting is put in correctly and the most energy efficient and all, all the rest, um, and again, not to then have it done now. And then it would not be meeting current standards. We would be looking to replace it in a year or two. So we're going to be, um, taking the credit from the insurance and then with other additional costs in order to ensure that it's the correct lighting that we do now put in and the remainder of the building. We're asking for the ability to access monies out of that insurance reserve. And again, anything else that may come up, I think I highlighted two areas, including the attic insulation that was spoken about earlier in the meeting in terms of where the pipe is. We of course want to be proactive and not have a recurrence of, um, related to kind of what occurred in the attic. So we're also making the recommendation to insulate that area. And that would also come out of this, and it's connected to the larger, um, claims. So it, we are allowed to access that money. And then the language, um, in the resolution, just to, to note, and this is again, legal, uh, all districts uses very similar type of, um, uh, language, because it's an emergency, the board's deeming it, and you'll see not in this memo, but in the actual, um, the resolution itself, it speaks to being able to forego some bidding requirements, right? So that, that's also important here. And, and basically what that means is we know Renew, um, who is contracted by the insurance company, quite frankly. Um, and to do this work, if then we are asking them to do some of, uh, whether it likely won't be the installation, that wouldn't, we would then be able to award it to a company that does it. And of course overseeing with our architects and engineers and everything, but we wouldn't have to do a thirty or sixty day competitive bid process on it. We would award it, uh, we would likely get some quotes and all the rest, but we wouldn't necessarily, it would, would allow us not to go through that process. And similarly, like being that Renew is doing the work, but, uh, with the insurance company or being, uh, paid directly by the insurance company. If, if we were doing those like lighting upgrades, we then would be able to pay them directly without, again, bringing another contractor, which would be actually not in our best interest and likely costs as far. So this resolution also allows us, because it's an emergency situation, to forego those requirements and, um, access funds out of that reserve and then also not necessarily go through our, uh, required bid, bid, bidding procedures as we typically would. So that, that's, it's kind of a twofold resolution.
Let, let me just say something very important there before, and let, let's go to questions. I've stressed through, uh, my verbal and also in writing that through competitive RFP, we have already in-house, uh, the external experts of LAN. We got to them through a very competitive process. So that was external. And, and through the required, uh, request or proposal process that New York State and other states require of public, of public entity. So one board, you have to understand that any work done now is guided by, in a sense, independent guidance. Similarly, uh, for PBDW, uh, independent cross-checking on us. So there, the, anyone who might be concerned about, oh my goodness, all this money, uh, who's who? Well, we've got there with guidance from the kind of process and procedure that gives space for it to be highly honest, highly correct, highly within the ethical procedures you would want. I just want to stress that.
Yeah. And this also, Bill, just speaking about our, um, professional service providers, our engineers and architects. Obviously we brought them in. They actually were on site, um, on the twenty-sixth, um, an architect and, uh, architect and an engineer. And then subsequent to that, um, a few, uh, Rena also came in from PBDW and all the rest. So I say that to say the expense related to having them also, um, involved in this, which is again, is critically important, that we can also pay those expenses out of that reserve as well. And again, I, you know, we don't expect that to be a significant dollar amount, but again, it was something that was not anticipated. This is professional services, um, and of course, you know, the, the level of repair, we want to ensure that they're watching and signing off and seeing the plans and involved in the plans, um, to protect the district's interests. Cause regardless of the insurance is paying for it, you know, we want to make sure that it is also being, um, certified. And, and again, those expenses related to that would be something that, um, the insurance would not pay for, but we would then pay for out of that reserve.
And, and let me say one thing, because we're in the business section of this meeting, so I want to stress a couple, uh, in a sense, decision rules for me and, and for us as a team. A Renew, as Maureen mentioned, was brought to us by, by Nicer. Uh, but Scott knows them very well, and I think that's really important, but he didn't pick them. They were picked for us by the insurance company. They are top flight. They are excellent. Collins Brothers was then, and we can explain how we got to them because it's an intensive amount of work. And rightly so, people, some people on the board elsewhere might say, well, who are these people? Well, one, they're excellent, and two, they were brought to us by the correct path and authorities. So I just want to stress that piece as well, um, just so you can be assured that we are being ethically, uh, correct on all of this, uh, as we should be.
Right. And we have used Renew before when, um, the insurance company, they're a, a big time restoration company. So although Joe did call them, they are the company that is used by Nicer Insurance, which is typical because they, you know, and they work with all the, they've done Bronxville schools, they've done them all. But they are, uh, they work very, uh, closely and they're the, the company that is brought in by our insurance carrier, which is, um, handles all of lower west sister schools, uses that same insurance carrier. So they're experts in it and they work, and they are also, in terms of although they're brought in by the insurance company, they are on all New York State, um, Office of Goods and Services bids. So they've won those bids. So that's how Nicer is able to work with them. So they, they work with Nicer directly, but they are also on, uh, multiple federal and state bids as a provider. So, uh, similarly, the insurance company would not be bringing in a company that was not also fully vetted and able to do that, this type of work in New York. And they have gone by doing, being on that list means they have also responded to, um, state bids and, and are on a competitive bid process. I say that to say that they're, you know, fully vetted or using, um, uh, the correct, uh, people, meaning their, um, certified payrolls and all the rest are required. So, uh, but again, they were and have been used and assigned to us by our insurance carrier as well. So.
Thanks, Maureen, for that comprehensive explanation of how it is that we come to use these folks so that people don't have the impression that it's like, you know, anything other than like a thoroughly, you know, explored process before these people come to us with their level of expertise. But I wanted to, um, have Catherine Poiz, uh, the question chat.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Maureen, for that clear explanation. I was hoping you could explain to me more and the community more how the insurance piece works. Cause I know over the past few years, insurance companies have become more difficult and less generous. And I know you've worked with this company for a while and had lots of thoughts on it. I just wanted to hear more about their role in covering expenses, if there are limits, like, because I know this is going to be a costly endeavor. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. So yes, that is in fact true. And even, uh, through this process, even Renew and others, you know, we've discussed that as, um, like all insurance companies and as they should, because although it is our insurance company, we're self-insured. Meaning we, with twenty-five other districts are, you know, established this. And of course it's, um, as, as a self-insured company, it's not just like we're going to travelers or something. And, um, I say that, so obviously we want to make sure that, you know, that any work that's deemed, uh, to be repaired is necessary and essential, right? Because again, what, just like all of us, right? It's like with our cars, we don't, just because they said we'll do extra work, we don't want it unless it's necessary because everyone pays for that, those premiums later. So, um, Nicer, as they should be, is being, is scrutinizing work. Um, uh, so that, that's why I kind of, I think earlier mentioned that the fact that they deemed it to, to the level, they don't do that, um, easily. Um, and of course, that's why having our own, uh, and architects and engineers to ensure that if there was any concerns on their end and, and the insurance company was wavering and like, well, you know, maybe that doesn't need to be done. We wanted to make sure that they were there and had, um, to, that all of our interests were protected. So Nicer does have that other independent building consultant that has been on site also. So the, the indication we're, uh, currently receiving is that the, um, the things in which we, our architects and engineers agreed with that are, um, compromised and in need of being, um, gutted or repaired, Nicer is in agreement with that. We do have term limits. We believe that the current understanding of what this claim will be, um, and I really don't want to share that number until we have an opportunity to sit down with Nicer. Again, because I may have a number and I, and I'm pretty confident, I know that the numbers that at least we're thinking about based upon what we understand this construction, you know, the, the cost of construction repairs to be, right? We have a sense of that, even through architects, of course, because that's how we, we, uh, establish bond pricing and all the rest. We, we understand that's underneath what our allowable insurance limit would be, meaning we're covered for it, you know? And, um, in, in those type of terms, although we do think it'll be a significant amount. The one piece we're reviewing, um, that I, nice of Renew, who's the company, when we met with them and we'll be having status meetings at least once a week, we've been having them all daily now. But as this process continues, no different than any, um, project that's here, we'll be meeting with them often as, as well as the insurance company. We want to make sure the content value, right? Sometimes the building will be repaired, except for those items that were, that I identified you as outside of the scope of, um, existing conditions that, that, that we're looking to fix the lighting correctly. But in terms of contents and things, I just, I do have to review my coverage there because personal items are typically not covered under insurance. So those type of items I'm sorting through. The good news is that the big, the things that we would be most concerned about, we're confident they'll be covered. I'm sure like with any insurance companies between, uh, the insurance carrier and Renew and any other subcontractors they bring on, though, as different estimates are, are provided to Nicer on, okay, now the restoration work was X amount. We think, um, putting this flooring in or whatever is going to be required is going to be X amount. That, that, there will be times of negotiation, um, throughout this process. It won't be, um, that, that's how it works. So there, it, it's sort of an ongoing process, but we're confident. Um, and we're all at least on the same page of what we believe is, is the, uh, necessary work moving forward. As far as the pricing, those are things that are going to be, uh, work, we'll be working through. Our insurance coverage is X, but you know, Nicer will, it's almost like when you get your car and they'll say, well, we, we don't think it should cost twenty thousand a fix. So we think it should cost eighteen. So those are going to be ongoing things that we'll be working with Renew. We'll be handling the majority of the work and Nicer and the district, right? That we'll be working to, um, make sure that we all get to an agreement on the, the, the cost and that everything within that cost is covered. So, so that's, it, it's, you know, we're, we're, we're pretty confident where we are today. We're not, you know, we feel good about, about, uh, that we're all on the same page.
Oh, that's excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, okay, I, I was going to ask a question, but this isn't question time, right? We're talking about business items and I'll put it in the FAQ as a community member. Never mind.
Yeah. I mean, the one thing that Bill and I spoke about, we think that three hundred thousand is sufficient that we're asking for, um, uh, you know, unless there's something that, to your point, Catherine, like, uh, on the co- like on the insurance coverages and, and I'm, don't want to speak out of turn. I think the only one area I just want to look at a little more closely is the contents, which are just like materials and such. And, and tech, our technology, I think for the most part, fared relatively well. We have some losses, but not signi- you know, for like the carts and different things, thankfully we're protected. We feel that those will not be losses. So there's certain things that we're okay on. Um, if there were something that were up and above that and we needed more money out of that reserve, that's how we would handle it. But I, I think right now, we think that three hundred is more than we'll need. I feel confident that we'll be able to, you know, do what we need to do within those dollars.
Joe, do you have a question?
Again, Maureen, can you just to dial back a minute, um, just explain to us the difference between a capital reserve and the insurance reserve?
Oh, sure. Uh, the cap- so the capital reserve, yeah. So the insurance reserve again is set up for things that wouldn't be covered, um, when you have a loss of property or, or anything else, quite frankly, it could be, you know, a, a claim brought against a district by, you know, that, that exceeds our, our coverage limits. So that insurance reserve liability, insurance reserve was set up for exactly this situation, which it has to be related to something that occurred in the building, you know, of loss, an event. And then, um, if we think it exceeds the amount of coverage, then we would access money from that account for, as we're doing in this situation. The capital reserve is set up differently. It's set up for an intentional bond project or capital improvement to the district. It also has requirements that that, similar to how on establishment it needed to be, um, voted on by the voters to establish the reserve. When we spend money out of that, it, it similarly has to be brought in front of the voters. So it's very different. And it would, it wouldn't be used for something, uh, in this, in this situation. You know, if we didn't have that reserve on hand, that, uh, insurance reserve, we would either be asking the board to take it out of our like unappropriated fund balance or something. It would not come from the capital. Cause again, capital reserve strictly has a requirement that it has to be brought forth to the voters.
And how much money is in the insurance reserve?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand. So we'll be taking three hundred out.
And, and Maureen, when I think about those seventeen classrooms that Scott mentioned and the loss of furniture and all those beautiful books that our teachers have cultivated over the years. Um, is there, is there money allocated for those replacements as well? And how is, how is that being accounted for?
Yeah. So mostly, uh, thank you. So other than, if, if the furniture is metal, it, it, it will be brought, actually they took, I think Scott seventeen trailer load of furniture out of the property the other day. Anything that's metal is, um, can be sanitized and cleaned and, you know, as long as it wasn't broken with, with any debris, that would be then, you know, we would, we didn't lose it, right? So other than that process. Um, books and such that would go under the contents. So I think some, some, some areas, some contents were completely lost, some, some was not. As Scott said, we tried to salvage what we could. We're going to be working closely with, um, anything that needs to be ordered, we'll order, we'll keep a, a, a running tally. I think we'll be okay on the contents on there. Again, like I said, I think the more, uh, higher end dollar items such as technology and things of that nature. You know, we didn't lose as much technology, thank God, because again, some of those carts are pretty expensive. And that, you know, if we, you talk about like a cart itself with the contents could be thirty-five thousand, you know, just that one thing. So like things of that nature that, you know, we're, we're confident that are okay. Um, so I think it's, I think it's mostly going to be, um, instructional materials that'll have to be replaced, uh, furniture. Any, the, the wood furniture, anything that is of any type of wood or composite wood does have to be replaced. So we do have some furniture losses. The big, the big item, which is, um, part of the classroom, but it's somewhat furniture in my mind. It's all the cabinetry has to be replaced, which again, is going to be, it's going to be nicer. So that, like, looking for the silver lining, we'll have beautiful cabinetry that, uh, cabinetry that, um, in those rooms, but that, that's a complete loss and that may be considered content. So I just have to see how the, um, I'm hoping they consider that part of the construction, meaning the insurance company, because that, that's where we'll be like kind of, uh, having those discussions a, as the claim gets clearer. So, um, again, we'll be working on replacing those items, uh, for teachers. But again, it will take them a while because as Scott mentioned, you know, just when you, just to get through what you have is difficult, you know? I think we, we know it's going to be a long process, I, I would think, you know? Because it's all your belongings are boxed up. I think even to get your mind around what you have and what you don't have and what, what is salvageable and what's not salvageable takes some time.
Yes. Having had many a classroom myself, the idea of having to figure that out is a lot. So my heart goes out to the teachers.
Yeah, it's a lot.
What, can I, will, will there, um, I know that there's a lot of community discussion around renovating the building right now, um, or rehabilitating the building, the building right now and all of the hopes and dreams in the bond proposal. Um, will there be a time when, um, the relationship between the work being done now and, and what we hoped to do architecturally in the bond? Will, will there be a chance for that to be discussed? And, and how does this impact the work that we hoped to do in the building? And, um, will, will there be a time when that will be flushed out for the community?
Yeah, yes. Because I, so in terms of the, the, the larger scope of work in the bond, right? You know, that area wasn't really, except for like, as I had mentioned earlier, a few floors, like some of the floors possibly neither the fifth or sixth hall, grade hallway were flagged. If we think about what we're current, the, the current scope of work we're looking at in the, uh, bond proposal, you know, the additions is separate and aside from that, um, some of the classrooms impacted are, are closer to the blue lecture room that's in the scope of the bond, but largely the Farragut complex, except for, again, we had, we had earmark money for flooring because the flooring in, in many of those rooms and, uh, lighting, as I had mentioned, were parked. You know, there was a dollar amount associated with that. Um, so to be honest with you, some of the work we're doing now will, and again, it's not a big, big part of it, but it either, there are two things. I think there were about a million dollars or so slated for, for the fifth and sixth grade hallways, lighting upgrades and flooring in the classrooms that were, uh, in, in the, the most dire need of that. So that this now will handle that work, that, that work now will be accomplished here. Um, now whether that, you know, again, that's a million dollars, but you know, whether then we'd say, okay, this now allows us to, to go further in that work with the flooring replacements in the Farragut complex, I mean, we could discuss later. But the one thing that we have been, um, thinking about is any of the finishes that we would have, uh, put into those rooms, meaning the floor in color and things of that nature, us, uh, that we would want to be, have more consistency through Farragut, right? So as, as you're doing work, so we are certainly, as we're thinking about the, the cabinetry, the, the floor finishes, the, the hallway finishes, there will be, uh, we will be thinking about what those finishes would have been in the, in the hopeful new addition to the building. We will be looking to, you know, ensure that that, that is, uh, considered. So, so that's why architects and engineers who are, have some thoughts on that are, are involved and they will be assisting us in, um, selecting the finishes for the room. So, you know, there's a ton of different flooring options and cabinetry and all the rest and, and they're going to be working with Scott, uh, primarily who, you know, anytime it's the building leader is very involved with the architects in the selection of those and, you know, I'm sure other people could weigh in too. But so, so that's the intersection with the bond. It, it's really not a large piece, but it's about a million dollars or so of the, of the budget.
Yeah. So Teresa, again, to use a phrase, another good headline question, I think a couple of the board members have the same question because you're clearly listening to, to the village. Um, we will be very clear with you. Um, and again, it's just fortuitous. I think it's fortuitous, you know? Perfect storm that led to this crisis, ahead of that fortuitous that we had already through competitive RFP landed some of the best work with us from an engineering and design standpoint. So we can be very clear on, uh, where now we don't have work to do under the bond. But remember, there were three parts to the bond still under proposal. Remember you're in the environmental analysis phase of that right now, but the Farragut complex part was not directly, other than the flooring, related to the Farragut wing. Uh, then there's the field piece and then there's the, the general piece. But we can be really clear with you as to the Farragut, uh, wing remediation and rebuild, what does that mean specifically around line items for the bond that's emerging? And again, full circle, we've got Maureen on it, Scott on it, and also our good external engineers, designers on it. So these aren't brand new people to giving you that answer and we'll be very active board, don't worry, and thus the community, very active, what, all that means.
I know Maureen had a question.
Thanks. I think it's also fortuitous and thank you, Maureen, for that insurance reserve. That was well timed for sure. Um, I just kind of had a next steps question, which you were alluding to, uh, Bill, which is sort of, this is kind of the immediate, uh, what are we doing? And the re low sounds like, you know, that's the next step of this, right? And then, uh, is it going to be that, like the FAQs will come out, right? Um, and, and how are we going to get sort of regular updates? We're going to work it into board meetings, just sort of a next steps and, and as we go through the various phases into construction and some of that stuff?
Yeah, let me answer a few things here. Let me go back to division of, of labor here. So the, what I left out is my job is to work very actively, because I mentioned to you on the academic side of this, any of those decisions, that Scott and the principals with, and with Melissa Samansky, the facility side is, uh, Maureen and Joe and our externals and Scott and Dan are in that mix too, right? And then, well, what am I doing? Well, my job is to be kind of guiding, connecting and communicating out, making sure that's happening as it's district wide and very much working with you as a board to help you understand where we are, listen to your questions, get answers, et cetera. So yes, you can count on now every board meeting, we will be talking about this in a posted agenda item, because that will also allow for public comment on that, because that public comment is important. Um, so that, that's sort of the broad plan. There will be specific school communications though, that will be coming out from Scott, coming out from Amy as much as Hillside's involved, coming out from Andy Clayman as much as the high schools involved. They're already doing that this week, uh, with their staff and not as much families yet at Hillside or the high school, but definitely the, the high, high school and Hillside staff have been hearing from Amy and Andy. Um, so, but that, that division of, of, of communication responsibility will continue. Uh, but when it's a district wide need, you will be hearing community and board from me. Um, and again, but we will make sure going forward that it's a posted agenda item, so you, you get these updates from us. Most immediately, um, early next week, we will be back out with the FAQs. Uh, we're getting lots of questions on that Google form that, that Scott and Dan designed and particularly Dan, thank you for stepping up on that. Uh, it's a structured way to give, we can't answer every one question, we'll look for the themes, we'll answer thematically. Uh, there'll be other communications, more building specific coming out, particularly from Scott and Dan regarding the plans for FMS. And then as that relates out again to Hillside and the high school, they'll be, uh, building specific communications, uh, though that's the outline. I hope that helps. Um, I don't know, Scott, if you want to add into that at all, um, or I think I, I said it. Okay. Well, I got a thumbs up. I feel, feel proud.
I'm thinking of communication, um, in terms of the emails that are sent out. I know there's building communication that happens towards, to the families, um, who, whom have children in the buildings, but, um, I, I've gotten a lot of questions from Hillside families and high school families who feel like they're not in the know of what's happening at FMS and they're really curious. And I wonder if, just to put it on the table, um, the communication should go out district wide in terms of the Farragut buildings?
Well, it has. So I guess what I need to know, that's really, really important. If other people did not get yesterday's email, because that email at the end of the day from me, my emails have gone in plan to everybody.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so if, if there are people not getting those, I got to work very quickly back with the, if you service, you know, and Melissa D is on this, Melissa D, you know, I'll chase that down.
No, I, I don't, that's not what I'm saying. I think everyone got your email yesterday.
So the communications then out, I guess we've been, uh, whatever Scott sent out that we made sure, because my, my modus operandi is that staff here first, they need to know first, so there are no surprises for them. Then somewhere in their board you're hearing, uh, and then we make sure the family's here. So we've now, this hit last week, so we've already had two major communications out and we'll have more out. It, there'll be one, there's one promise Friday, um, and then we'll have another one early next week, but we're very careful still to send it because we're small district families overlapping the buildings to have, uh, from me, something that's summative and picks up everything. Um, so, but again, I would stress, if there's someone who, they're, so to speak, their neighbor got something they didn't get, uh, let us know that and we can try and double check our system.
And I just wanted to remind the community that as a board, we haven't met since this actually took place. So the first opportunity that we have actually had to have, to pose questions amongst ourselves because we're legally required to do so as a group and public, this is it. So that's also why we didn't set this up as a meeting for there to be public comment because quite frankly, we can't have the back and forth unless it happens in a public setting. And because this is purportedly a break, people are all in four directions of the wind. So here we are.
Teresa, your question, let, 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 let me say something else here, which is meant to be very affirming, some may hear it as not, but it's meant to be very affirming, is we are straight out busy getting ready for our children and staff.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's why you heard the division of labor. So, um, we will communicate in planned ways, in collective ways. Uh, we cannot handle individual one-off communications. Right there, some people might feel insulted. Don't, please. The affirming point you're hearing is we've got to be there busy to be ready for our students and our children next week. Um, and that means, that's why we put out those way to collect questions, get back collectively as we can. And once we're back in the flow and we're all here next week, we're into it, then we'll back, be back into our normal point of, you know, Janie or Johnny have an issue, talk to your teacher, then work the ladder. Right now, that's why we're, we're handling it the way we are. So to a really good question again, another great headline question, Teresa. In one way, everybody's been hearing, what, been sharing. So if they say, gosh, there's a couple of days gap, trust me, that's because the team is working hard to get ready for the return. Um, so, but I, it's again, very good questions.
So Bill, we can assume that emails that you send to everybody will include all of the headlines or the things that each of the principals might be sending to parents of, just for their buildings?
Yeah, I want to say 90% because there may be some 10% that is.
No, it's not going to have everything, but.
Yeah. Yeah. No, thank you, Jody. Thank you. Well said.
So do you want me to move on to the approval of the resolution or what is it that you want me to? What's up next, Bill?
I, I think that if the board is ready to vote, then I would suggest that, but I don't want to speak for the board. I, I kind of overstepped a wee bit earlier, but just trying to be helpful, i.e. instruction on agenda.
So I should ask my colleagues, have you exhausted your questions or do you feel comfortable that you could take a vote now at this point? Okay. So I'm going to give you the language as best as what I think it should be and then Bill or Melissa, anybody else can correct me if I'm not doing the right language, but.
You want us to put our hands up, Sylvia, or?
Right. I'm just going to ask the question and then you guys are going to take over the motion. So my question is, do I have a motion to approve business item 3A, the resolution to declare an emergency concerning water damage at the Farragut complex?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Please say aye.
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 I think we have unanimous agreement. Need from us, Bill?
Uh, yeah, your last item, at least on the posted agenda is the Board of Ed comments. Uh, you've already provided a lot of those, but again, you may want to, is your opportunity is a sort of wrap up to this meeting.
Do I have any closing comments, thoughts, questions from anyone? Feel free. I think we might have exhausted our questions at least up until this point, since it is New Year's Eve. I know you all have wild plans. Right? Exactly. Disco ball there in the backyard. But anyway, well, I guess I'll take this as an opportunity to ask, uh, whether I have an emotion to adjourn this emergency meeting of the Board of Education.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for all the work that you've been putting into this and, uh, we will all get together in person very soon. Be well.
Thank you.
Have a safe New Year.
Thank you.
Okay.
Happy New Year. Bye. Thank you, everyone.
Happy New Year, everyone. Yep.
Happy New Year.
Yep.
Hi.